All right, it is six o'clock on Monday, August 19th, 2024. I'm calling to order the town of Rutland's live board meeting. Our meeting got moved from the lower level of the Rutland Public Library to the wood studio behind the wood house next to the fire station. Don't have a flag here. We are being recorded on Zoom as well as by local access for live streaming now, as well as re-airing on local access, YouTube and other outlets as usual. I will move right into, uh, present, oh, sorry. Also, present, in person are Tom Galvin, Paul Mattson and myself. We're just a member board tonight. Jen and Harry have prior commitments. So I will move right into approval of Treasury Law 25-4 and 25-P to be four.
Motion.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
In a second. Any comments, questions, concerns? Still early in this year 2025, or yeah, this year 2025. Roll call. Call.
Mattson.
Yeah, I'll go.
Wait, man. Moving on to approval of meeting minutes from August 5th, 2024. It was a regular meeting. I believe everyone was in attendance. They are included in our packet.
I agree with your report, meeting minutes, August 5th, 2024, regular meeting.
The motion is a second.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. Questions, comments, concerns? Thank you, Tameka. Roll call. Call.
Mike said I.
Yeah, I'm I.
Wait, I. Is there anyone here for public comment? Does that do it? Okay. Communication, member comments, announcements and town administrator updates. I would like to start by saying, um, it's hardly been this long since summer already. School, back to school starts next week, so please be mindful that the kids will be out at the bus stops early. The, um, I think teachers, most teachers go back on Monday. Wachusett starts on Tuesday. Bay Pass starts on Wednesday. I'm not sure about St. John's or, uh, other name. Apologize for that. Would just be mindful of the kids' presence out and about. Wishing everyone a great, successful school year to the teachers, the staff, as well as the students. We have a big primary election coming up, September 3rd. If you go to rutlandma.gov/elections, you can find all of the information relating to the election. Saturday, August 24th, is the last day to register a vote for a time to vote in the primary. There is also early voting, um, which is starting nine to five, I think, on Saturday morning, or Saturday at the, um... I don't want to speak. Town Hall. Um, early voting and everything will be at Town Hall. And the last day to request a mail, uh, vote by mail ballot is Monday, August 26th. All of the information can be found again on our website, rutlandma.gov/elections, or you can reach out to our office or the town flex office. The, uh, Rutland Fire Department has the community outreach program going on. More information can be found on our town website about that. That's under a news flash. I believe it was also shared on social media. The Rutland Police Department announced they will be doing a Citizens Police Academy that requires enrollment of Rutland residents age 18 and older. Please, you can find more information on our town website as well and through these announcements, and you can register by contacting Officer Brendan McShay. And we still have our municipal, municipal, uh, town auction going on. I believe through, um, August 26th at 3:00 p.m. So there's lots of surplus equipment available, um, Rutland specific, so check it out. The link there can be found on our town website as well. I believe we just had an announcement go out with the planning board is seeking interest for an associate member, which is a new position that was created for the planning board. Additional information can be found on their website as well. If you're interested, please reach out through the office, planning office or our office. We can be in touch with the appropriate people. And I believe we are also looking for, uh, an alternate member for CMRPC, their Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. So if you're interested in learning more about that, please reach out to me as well. Does anyone else have any comments, announcements?
Yes, um, I reported probably about three meetings ago that cable and contract were probably making about as much progress as a snail eating its way through a concrete wall. While I got my head and my antennas out anyways, because I've gotten contact from Spectrum and they will be sending out a contract for us to review in September.
Mr. Administrator.
Madam Chair, appreciate, um, the board accommodating our change of meeting location. Obviously, now with our circumstance, I'm glad we're able to test some of our, uh, new meeting technology. Uh, just have a few updates posted also on the town website, but just I'll roll through these in the memo provided in your board's packet. Last, at the end of July, Senator Keeley signed the FY25 budget. Within the budget is a 3% increase to unrestricted general government aid. Essentially the lottery aid that municipalities rely on for a lion's share of our state aid. However, it also included reduced veterans benefits. So there's a little bit less money coming in for benefits for our veterans and also they increased some of our state assessments higher than the budgeted just lately. So, um, unfortunately, we are actually at a net reduction of budgeted state aid approximately $1,500. Luckily, this is a small enough amount of money that I believe that we can just cover this for the overall, uh, the overall budget, but just want to note for the board, when you hear that state aid increased, that's not entirely true. So just, if people are asking about that. Also, within the FY25 budget, thanks to the advocacy of State Senator Peter Durant and State Rep. Kim Ferguson, as a $20,000 earmark for the Community/Senior Center, most notably, improvements, ADA improvements, Americans with Disabilities Act. This is a much smaller figure than what the overall scope of what the ADA improvements that are needed there. You'll recall, uh, several years ago, DPW in Weston and Sampson, there was a 72, a amount of approximately $200,000 in overall construction improvements, which meant reconstructing the restroom facilities and some other building modifications. This will cover, um, kind of the easy stuff. So the automatic door openers and modifications, um, you know, to the restroom facilities. That just means that we're gonna have, um, you know, some toilets that are actually sized for adults and then, you know, some bathroom bars to make sure that we're fully compliant with ADA with respect to that. We're not doing any substantial construction this project. Also, within the FY25 budget, included a slight increase in Chapter 78 for Wachusett Regional School District. The school committee last week, or a few weeks ago at this point, voted to utilize the additional Chapter 78 to offset community assessments. Rutland's new assessment is $16,432,498, which is just over $122,000 lower than what was approved that time of year. This is a good start for us. It means we have a little bit of free cash right now already for FY25. Just want to thank Superintendent Riley, Business Manager Cruzay and the school committee for their support in this. Within the same meeting, the school committee endorsed the FY26 capital improvement plan. Requested projects for Rutland in FY26 include placement of the curving in sidewalks and the associated parking facilities at three schools in Rutland. The estimated cost, I'm gonna round up and say, is about a million dollars for all three schools. A pretty big project. And also a replacement of the classroom carpets at the quality elementary school they're looking to replace with tile, which is easier to clean and is also better for accessibility. We will begin our capital improvement planning process. Meaning we'll be sent this week to departments with respective projects, requested projects to by mid-September and will be working with CIPC to start evaluating those projects and start the capital budget planning process. And as the chair mentioned, the police department is closing February 1st. Citizens Police Academy is starting next month. Just want to thank Officer Brendan McShay and Police Chief Monaco for leading this initiative. This will be a great program and we're working with our partners at Mass State Police, Western County Sheriff's Office and some other state agencies. Again, if you're interested, please contact the police department, more specifically Officer McShay. You can obtain his contact information online or by contacting PTO. And that is all I for my part.
Anyway, I have a couple of questions with Tom and Paul. Do you guys have any questions for Austin?
No.
Um, Austin, I have a couple of questions, sorry. For, um, under the state assessments, who went up? And it's not a he, I mean, it's a, it almost doubled. The RMV non-renewables, renewal surcharge increased. What does that speak to?
Yeah, so, um, it's interesting. The way that this works is if you owe money to the RMV as a Rutland resident, um, essentially it's about a year lag. What, uh, the RMV will do is they'll take a look and see all the Rutland residents that owe some sort of money to the RMV and then the community actually gets hit on that the following fiscal year. So, um, unfortunately, this means that we have some folks that, for whatever reason, whether it's non-renewal and non-payment, we end up paying for that through state assessments. There's really no way that we can control that or mitigate that. OTRAC, that's a great point. The initial charter sheet estimates were at around $5,200 and then all of a sudden, last minute, they boosted that up to almost, well, just over $9,500, so. A little bit more difficult than the other state assessments where you kind of have an idea where they're gonna go.
Um, I was glad to see that the state-owned land budget, state revenue increased slightly. I still nowhere near, given how much state homeland we have, but it's moving in the right direction. For the work at the building of Landwood, I just want to make sure that whatever work is done is done in ADA compliance, um, that it's not just we think it's gonna be good, but that it's actually good. Because I know there are more points of concern, so. And then for the capital needs at the schools, is there any way that any of the work can be bundled across other schools, whether it's Rutland schools or, um, schools within the district? I think of, I, I think at least the EDC probably needs a significant amount of parking lot repair. I don't know if there's ability to kind of bundle, um, the materials as well as I think, if I remember correctly, some of the carpet replacement, uh, collect wood down the line. If we can get a better deal on the tile and/or anything to do, either just within our schools, but also if there's other schools in the district that need to do it, we can get better pricing materials or a better cost for the work or whatever, so I don't know.
Yes, I agree. Yeah, I think we all, any one of us that have a Costco or BJ's membership know that save a little bit of money when you buy in bulk. I think just especially on the, well, just the two projects alone. I think we just want to make sure that we're coordinated, that when we are ready to fund projects, that we're coordinated with, whether it's, for example, Holden or Paxton, if they're gonna do the same project, or the district, if they're gonna do the same project within the same fiscal year and we're willing to fund it, make sure that they're willing to fund it and then we can coordinate on the procurement. Believe it or not, the procurement is kind of the easiest part. It's, you know, are we gonna come up with a million dollars for paving the schools?
But I think sometimes trying to just be better partners regionally and knowing that we are technically a regional district from pre-K through high school, that even though the communities kind of feel very strongly that they operate their own elementary and middle schools independently, they're still regional districts, district schools. And so is there a way that we can utilize that, that force of population behind some better pricing?
Yeah, I, I think it may behoove us to explore some of the aspects of the regional agreement and see if there's a way that, um, I'd have to take another the deeper look at the budget, um, the capital plan for FY26. If they're looking to do, if their requests are consistent across several of the communities, for paving, for example, possibly exploring if the district can do, or put the borrowing, just we need, you know, the approval of the communities. So almost as if they procure the projects off together and we just end up paying them.
Setting them up.
Yeah, so. But I think it's a good idea. I can try to discuss that with the superintendent of the town administration tomorrow.
I think we have done a decent amount between, um, the work with each project and then some of the local recovery, taking care of some of the parking lots, but I don't, I know some of the other municipal lots may need some attention as well. So I have any way to, you know, also have that in the back current lines as well? Like, is there just trying to get the most bang for the buck from the best price? Thank you. Anyone else's questions or comments for, um, Austin? Moving into appointments and resignations, we have the CMRPC delegate appointments. We have Mr. Tim Narwal here. He's here. He submitted a letter of interest to be a full delegate for one year. My understanding is that CMRPC, um, because our population, Rutland's population has increased, we now are allocated two full reps to CMRPC. Instead of one and an alternate, we now have two and an alternate. And my understanding is the way that works is the planning board is responsible for assigning one, um, of the full members. The select board is responsible for assigning the other full member as well as the alternate member. And it's great if we have active residents to participate because it helps us get additional hours of service through CMRPC as well. So, um, I think we have a letter of interest. I know we have a letter of interest from Tim serving in the other full, the select board, the select board's, uh, full time, the full position. And we have a letter from our town planner, John Shabro, saying that at the planning board meeting, planning board voting unanimously to recommend to us that Tim be, um, appointed as a full delegate to CMRPC. And I think the other full delegate is Keith Puddle, right?
Keith, yes, for the planning board.
Yeah. And then we, I put out, Tameka, maybe you can put out a call for an old member also.
Yep.
I think, you know, maybe they're, I think, planning board can maybe mention, see if there's interest on common, but I think also if there's any other residents that are interested in just kind of getting their feet wet from the planning aspect of stuff as well. Maybe I can help with that or something. So does anyone have any questions for Tim since he's here? I know, Tim, I think you, I know you've spoken with Dick a few times.
I was alternate last year for you guys.
Oh, okay, so you guys.
Yeah, Dick and I went to the meetings in downtown to CMRPC with Jen and we kept in touch. It's just, instead of being an alternate, I wanted to just move to a full member and open that slot up for somebody else to get a learning experience. So that's what I did. I basically spent, I think it was two years with you guys, going through Dick and learning as much as I could and also meeting Trish, Janet and some of the other members of the other towns. After meetings downtown, actually, we went to the meetings downtown, so.
I move to appoint Tim Warhol as a delegate to CMRPC for a one-year term.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second motion.
Any additional conversation or Tim's comments? Roll call. Call.
I.
Yeah, I'm I.
Wait, and I. You're good to go, Tim. Thank you. I think just can you get sworn in from us from Town Hall, do you know? So.
I'll just go see Jen or Ben or, uh...
I mean, uh...
Either one, yeah.
Just one second. Because that's the election.
Oh, definitely. I go in the second.
Oh, you better. You might be waiting a while. Thank you.
Yeah, because my term, I think, is alternate ran out in June 30th.
Yes. And I think there's a meeting coming up.
On bond, no bond issues, yeah.
Yeah. A quarterly meeting is coming up. You can even send a letter, like, in September, yeah. Yeah. I sent you out the date and, um, she was gonna meet, and I think it's October. She was, no, it's not. I forget what she said it was. I think she said Spencer, Spencer, thank you. Remember. Yeah, so, yeah, thank you. We have, um, next we have council on aging appointment. We have a letter of interest, um, or an application interest with a little note from, um, Mr. Mike Verikas. He's interested in a three-year term. And I believe we have a letter of support from the Council on Aging Board of Directors, Pat Lutino Martin. Says that they endorse his point, to grant his point as a perspective. My only, I know we just appointed Mike to EDC, right? And this is a comment that I've had always for us as well as other boards and committees is I think we as town need to be better about reaching out and getting new interest and not having the same people serve on multiple boards across multiple entities, whether they're elected or appointed, because I think sometimes, um, that doesn't generate a whole lot of diversity. But we have an opening and we have an interest who is very highly recommended, so.
Do you know this gentleman?
Uh, we met him. He was at, uh, he had come to EDC that it, um, with the EDC meeting appointment. Yeah, so.
Yeah, he's one of the contenders for this. He's on CIPC.
Okay, I'm sure, yeah, that's one.
Madam Chair, he's also in the audience. He's unmuted now.
Oh. Um, and if...
Yeah. I'm here, but I'm having a hard time understanding what you're saying. That's why I'm kind of like, I hear Austin very clear, but nobody else is that clear for some reason.
Okay, that's good feedback for us to have. It could just be the way that we have the room set up. We'll keep that in mind. Thank you. Does anybody, Paul or Tom, do you have any questions for Mike or any?
No, I don't want to use, no. Thank you for stepping up.
So I entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve a one-year term.
It is a three-year term.
Oh, I'm sorry. I make a, uh, motion to appoint Mike. I apologize, Mike.
Devericus.
Uh, Devericus to the Council on Aging for a three-year term.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional comments? Questions, concerns? Roll call. Call.
Mattson.
Yeah, I'm I.
Wait, and I. Thank you, Mike. You're good to go. You just need to get...
Thank you.
You need to get sworn in, um, for this position at Town Hall with an EDA or then the clerk's office.
Move to.
Thank you. We have a resignation from the Council on Aging from Ben Varian. Just with the commentary that, um, given to the commitments involved with his job, the timing of meetings don't allow him to attend the offer. So we, it's a formality that we accept the resignations, but we don't really, I mean, say over the resignation, so. I would entertain a motion to, um, accept the resignation of Mr. Varian from the Council on Aging.
So.
Second.
Second motion.
Question, comments, concerns? Roll call.
Mattson, I.
Yeah, I.
Wait, and I. Who per reps? I appreciate having kind of diversity on the, um, Council on Aging and I know Ben brought a lot, but time commitments are tough. We have a resignation from Mr. Jim Susie from RDIC due to personal reasons. And he just said that he, it's been a pleasure working with you all and he wishes, wishes to pass the RDIC. Again, I would entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Susie from the RDIC.
So. Second motion.
Motion and second. Roll call. Call.
Mattson, I.
Yeah, I.
Wait, and I. Who per reps again? Jim, I know it was a, not a super long-lived term, but I appreciate all the work and insight that you brought to the RDIC. Thank you. Um, moving on, also, Tameka, we are putting out a call for interested memberships to fill that seat for the RDIC also.
Yes, um, so I plan on, I wanted to first find out the planning board associate member, see if we got any feedback and then I plan on putting something out for my, everybody of the openings that we have. But meantime, I've updated that EDC page on the website, so if anybody wants to see the current openings, um, that is updated and they'll get a public, perfect thing out there. It can be absolutely, thank you, I appreciate it.
So there's a lot of kind of land use stuff coming up, right? Because we have the planning board associate member, RDIC, and CMRPC is kind of a little bit more broadly. Yep, so, thank you. Um, I don't think we have anything listed under old business. Moving into new business, we have seasonal liquor license for Rutland Marketplace. This was brought before us the previous year back in the spring. They come and access to, for a seasonal liquor license for Marketplace. It's gone through the ADCC process now and now we have, they have, we have the license in hand. And we just need a motion to sign the seasonal liquor license for Rutland Marketplace.
So.
We have a motion.
Second motion.
A second, and everything is paid and everything, just for everyone's, um, peace of mind, this is, um, valid April 1st through December 31st. And from Monday through Saturday, same to 10:00 p.m. and move to 10:00 p.m. on Sunday.
Does that mean that they can sell hard liquor, correct? All right, so they've got to find a place to put it, all that stuff.
Now, when they came in to talk to us before, they had said that they weren't planning on taking a, a large part of the store for it, but just kind of doing it as a service for their regular customers and everything, and to try to bolster some, some more foot traffic in and out.
Yeah, it would be a special water type thing, if you'd like a particular type of alcohol.
The only question I had was the NIPS thing. That seems to be a problem throughout the Commonwealth these days with the NIPS. Was that, was that part of the seasonal?
So we had asked, so Rutland, as you know, doesn't have any bylaw or anything, so we can't, you know, but we had asked that it was in consideration, knowing that the issues that we have with litter and everything and the feedback that we've had over the years of people coming in with the empty net bottles they pick up from their front lines and everything, to really consider moving away from that if at all possible.
Their front lines.
Yeah.
Did they pick the same?
56.
Yeah.
My, my drainages are just littered with them.
Yeah.
But they just come by and toss them out on that curb there by Brooklyn.
Yeah. And so he, they, they were very mental to understanding the concerns that the town had.
I know a lot of towns in this area are talking about bylaws and reductions within their liquor license. And I didn't know if that was something that had been talked about with you guys.
We haven't, it hasn't come up recently since, it's been a number of years since I think it had come up and at the time, that board had no interest in touching it. I can't say for now, you know, what, where it stands, but, um, it's also be mindful of what other communities are selling because...
Oh, I get it, right?
Yeah, so, yeah. No, but it was definitely brought up in conversation when, um, they were applying for the license. It's just like, hey, can you be a good community member? You know, and they were...
Yeah, just to move up to the cash register, reminding the cashier, just, like, there's a Rutland liquor store, all the NIPS and quarter and all that stuff.
Scratch tickets.
Yeah, scratch tickets and buy your NIP bottles.
Yeah.
Okay, good enough, thanks.
So I would accept the tweet. You guys are already going. Okay, good. Thank you for bringing me that in. Okay, so you voted, we can sign that, okay. We have before us a request for Route 56 infrastructure project. I think, uh, asking Austin for, Austin's asking us for a letter of support for the Combasette Road 56 detour plan around the dam work.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just give me a moment, I'll say. So, uh, you recall at the previous select board meeting, Mass U T, DEPA and some other state agencies rejected the, um, proposed temporary dam for the closure of Moulton Pond. The permanent dam design was accepted. They, I think, disputed some of the calculations that the engineers had prepared and the engineers have since come back and... have since come back, and will re-submit a new temporary dam. As a part of this, we need to submit a letter of support on behalf of the board. I've provided a sample letter in your packet, authorizing the chair to sign this. You'll see the proposed detour for approximately two weeks, the road will be closed just before Multnomah Pond Dam on both sides, I guess north and south, and they'll be asking most, if not all, the traffic, especially the larger truck traffic to take 68 going south and then just going down either Wachusett, Wachusett Street, or going all the way down 122 and connecting to 68 that way. Local traffic and the businesses on Palmaguss Road will still be accessible by the public, however it can, we're just looking to get the larger truck traffic. There's also a plan in coordination with the regional school districts to make sure that buses are able to get to where they need to get to, obviously with some exceptions that you just can't cross Multnomah Pond. So this is a formality, Mass UTE is asking just again for a letter of support for the proposed detour. Again, this is approximately a two-week closure. If all goes well, and everything's submitted timely, the Mass UTE is looking to start it on September 9th. I would just be cautious with that date, maybe add a couple of days or weeks after that, but all goes well, September 9th, and approximately a two-week closure. Not ideal, obviously, it's school starting, we should have been about halfway done at this point, but it is what it is, and we're asking for a new letter on behalf of the board itself.
It's going to be done, right?
At some point.
So I would entertain a motion to move the chair to it, sign the letter of support for the proposed detour of the Route 56 infrastructure culvert replacement project.
So moved. Second motion.
Motion and second, any comments on the letter, it's been provided, I think it's a draft, but I think it covers everything that Mass UTE needs once. Roll call, Paul?
Matt and I, yell, I.
Wait and I, thank you, Austin.
Good question, I'm okay with what you're saying. After they finish the dam, is the road going to be, is that, does that two weeks include them?
No.
Doing the cover over it, or is that still, is that pushed out too?
Yeah, so final paving of the whole project won't take place until the spring.
Okay.
So there'll be at least a binder code, let that settle, they'll do at least do over the winter.
Yep.
And then they'll do a final code paving in the spring.
We have pursuant to MGL, we need to accept a monetary gift donation from the Deveraux School to the police department. They have gifted the police department $45,000 from community, from Deveraux Advanced Community Health expended by a discretionary police chief. I believe this generally goes into a gift account, so if there's any conversation, otherwise I would entertain a motion to accept the gift of $45,000 from Deveraux Advanced Community Health, the police department, to be expended by the police chief.
So move, taken.
Is there any questions, comments, discussion? And there will be a thank you breakfast for the, I think that we've been invited as well as the police department, public safety in September. So we have a motion and second, roll call, Paul?
Matt and I, yell, I.
Wait and I, thank you, Deveraux.
Yeah, is that the average or did we give them, because I, I remember a number bigger than that in the past, like 50K?
This is bigger than that.
Yeah, also, this is bigger?
I think last year, for example, was like 40,000, it's.
Okay.
Marsa.
Okay, great, I was just curious, I thought I remember 50.
This is, in my recollection, this is the largest that was brought, but.
It's 5,000 more, the total has been 40,000. And for those who don't know, it was based on a full year, a full police officer's salary, so that tells you how long it's been.
Yeah, as we say, officers buy you 40K.
Right, they have it for quite some time, so just to give you an idea of the number.
Is there any curricular business to come up for us? Otherwise, we have an executive session, so.
I'm leaving. Thanks.
If there's no other curricular business, I would entertain a motion to move to, into executive session for reason number six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the. I will reconvene open session at 7:36 PM, and after our executive session, I would entertain a motion to approve the grant agreement between the Town of Rutland and Historical Society for the Franklin T. Wood House as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion for a second, and a second. Questions, comments, concerns? Roll call, Paul?
Matt and I.
Yell, I.
Wait and I, thank you. And just for our upcoming select board meetings, we moved our September meeting to the 4th. Tom, I think that you're unable to attend.
It's, it's going to be tough, I'm going to do my best.
Okay, if you can hop on Zoom or, you know, we can try to.
Maybe I'll.
Create timing of things or whatever.
I'll do my best, I promise I'll do that, it's just going to be tough.
It's just, I didn't realize, I forgot that the 3rd is primary election, and I really hate to have a mean run on an election day.
Okay, so it's officially moved to the 4th.
Yeah. We'll have Zoom available, like I said, if we need to try to play round those stuff, we have, we have September 16th is a regular scheduled meeting, and September 30th, so September we have three meetings because we have the extra beginning of the month for a short one. Is there any other business to come before the board? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
Motion and a second, roll call, Paul?
Matt and I, yell, I.
Wait and I, 7:38 PM, thank you.